Board of Selectmen, everybody's present. The first order of business is to go into executive session. So I'll make the motion that we go into executive session. Let me see here. Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss the following under Section 21A 3, strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting would have detrimental effect, and I say it does, for the Halifax 239 Association of Police Officers and Local 3159 firefighters. Also, under Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, the town accountant. And we will also consider executive minutes from October 22nd and November 6th.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes also. So we'll be back, hopefully not too late. All right. Back into regular session. Everybody's here. So if you would join me in saying...
My pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We're a few minutes late, but we do have a scheduled public hearing at 6 o'clock. And so I guess I'll have to open the meeting and then close it, right?
Yep.
So I will make a motion that we open the public hearing on pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C, to determine whether a member of the Conservation Commission, Kimberly King, should be removed as a member of the Conservation Commission for the cause of repeated failure to attend meetings of the Conservation Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That's unanimous. Is Ms. King here? I just want to make sure we ask. I don't see her present. So let's start with our paperwork here. All right. So we're going to offer as exhibits here, we'll just number these serially, Pam. Can you keep them in a file?
I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Yep. So Exhibit 1 will be a certified mailing. This is to Ms. Kimberly King, 668 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., which we understand is her address.
That is our address on file.
Okay. So that'll be Exhibit 1. We also had sent a letter which was not unable to forward, not deliverable, to Ms. Kimberly King at 668 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. So that'll be Exhibits 1 and 2. Thank you.
And this is the letter that was in that.
Okay. And then the third, Exhibit 3, will be November 5th, 2024, letter, notice to Ms. King. You're notified that the town of Halifax Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, at 6:00 PM at the Great Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C, to determine whether you should be removed as a member of the Conservation Commission for the cause of repeated failure to attend meetings of the Conservation Commission. Of the last 10 meetings, you have been absent for seven of those meetings. Through the 2024 calendar year, you have been present for less than 50% of all meetings. You may attend the public hearing and be heard and present evidence and/or present witnesses at the time and place designated. You may be represented by, at the public hearing by counsel at your expense if you so choose. So this will be Exhibit 3. Thank you. And then we have Exhibit 4.
The notice of the public hearing, which was running in the newspaper the last two weeks.
Okay. So we also, Exhibit 4 will be the notice of public hearing. This is, like you say, it's been in the newspaper for two weeks now. So we'll make that as number 4.
And then this is Ms. King's attendance record for the calendar year 2024.
Okay. And Exhibit 5, the attendance records, which shows when she was present and absent over the course of this year up until 11/12, which is last week, I guess, right? So that'll be 5?
Good, 5.
Yep. Okay. Anyone here have anything to tell us about Kimberly King? Okay. I'm not hearing any pauses. Okay. So up to the board. We did have a discussion with her once and advised her that the attendance had improved. Apparently it did improve a little bit for a year ago, but this year there's been no attendance practically at all.
Yeah. No. I mean, if you look, she's missed eight of the last 11. And it's tough. We as selectmen appreciate volunteers, but you want to make sure our commissions and groups can run. And I think attendance is a huge part of that, just for cohesion, just for, you know, things to run smoothly. So, you know, if you can't make it, you can't make it. And begrudgingly, I would, you know, I know her heart's in the right place, but I think just based on the attendance, I think it makes sense to remove Ms. King.
I just think that, you know, I think that life gets in the way, things happen, life gets busy, things change, and that's, I appreciate any of that, all of that. But, you know, 33% present in person, 50% present overall. It's not a right to be on a board when you're appointed. It's a privilege. You know, I certainly appreciate the volunteer work by all the boards, by all the commissions, by all the committees. But things change, and that's okay. And I think that has to be okay, with the best interest of the town in mind, to be present. And being present is important. Right, wrong, or indifferent on your vote, being present and showing up does matter.
Sure.
It's not personal. I don't know her. I've never met her. She's probably quite capable, and I appreciate her past contribution, but I would also err on the side of a removal.
Okay. All right.
So before you vote, you want to close the public hearing?
We should vote on, somebody should make a motion first, and then we should vote on that, and then close it. No.
Public hearing first.
Public hearing closed, right?
Okay. Yep. So just to make sure we're all on the right page here. Under Chapter 40, Section 8C, this is unique to the Conservation Commission, the removal has to be for cause, which includes any ground asserted in good faith. She's entitled to due process, which is the opportunity to present her side of the story. And she's not here, so we don't have any information from her one way or another. Okay. Anybody else have anything else to say about this? Okay. So I will move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
And any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we have a motion to remove Kim King as a member, Kimberly King, as a member of the Conservation Commission. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So she'll be notified again as...
We will attempt to notify her again?
Go there, and we'll let the Conservation Commission know that also. Okay. Let's see here. Yes.
Alan Diaz, Chair of the Conservation Commission. The only thing, the only question that I have is, the only reason that we knew, or I knew about it, that was posted on your agenda. So I think that in this particular circumstances, that maybe the Chair or the Commission should have been notified at the hearing. I mean, we're short of people, but at least we can prepare for that. And we had no notice, so I don't know who schedules the notices, but that's the only point I want to make.
Okay. Yeah. It was in the paper, and she was given direct notice to her address.
That's okay. The hearing's closed. I don't object to anything that the Board's done. I mean, the Commission doesn't have a nickel in this quarter, so it's just that I think we should have got some sort of notice, whether an email...
Okay.
I can appreciate that. Did you notice her absence in 50% of your meetings?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Diaz, I also think we discussed it. I don't think I, we had scheduled it yet, but I did let you know that it was up to me. So I apologize for not giving the date.
Yes. I'm well aware of, you know, the circumstances, and I think we've made every effort to try to accommodate. And, you know, it's the Board's decision, and I think it's a wise decision. My only question is that, you know, if it happens again, and I know that section is only unique to Conservation, that the Commission should have been notified.
We should have told you. You're absolutely right. Yep. That's a mistake on our part.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to, we don't have an appointment now till a quarter of, so why don't we, you want to do the warrants and commitments and get that...
Sure. I move to firm approval of the following warrant and commitments. Vendor warrant number 43 for $364,509.53. Ambulance commitments 10/28/24 through 11/3/2024 for $54,302.24. Ambulance commitments 11/4/24 through 11/10/2024 for $45,863.80.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 44 for $467,331.56. Vendor warrant number 45 for $469,471.97. And withholding warrant number 46 for $163,449.50.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So I'm going to kind of jump around a little bit, just so we can get some of this stuff out of the way. So we have a road opening permit from under 17 Old Farm Road, curb cut, curb to curb across the street. It's been approved by the Police, Fire, Highway, Conservation, so we have all the approvals in place. Everybody has a copy of it. And I will make a motion that we approve the curb cut.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We have some applications for, one is an application to use the Halifax Town Green, Holidays in Halifax, Tanya Masa, the annual Holidays in Halifax event, Ice Sculpture Tree Lighting Course from the high school, performing on the town steps. Date of the event is 12/14, set up at 3, starts from 5 to 8. Food trucks will be set up at the elementary school parking lot, and the town will play amplified music as we always do. So we have a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Figured you would.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Excuse me. Okay. Live entertainment permit application, the farm at Ravensbrook. And this is, oh, I'll copy the same thing here. Okay. So November 29th and November 30th, 2024.
And December 1st.
Okay. And December 1st?
So three of them? Yeah, I think there's three of them.
Oh, okay. So the application, okay. And also, wait a minute, that's for the liquor license. So I'm assuming it's the same. According to this, it just says those two dates, but I'm...
Oh, the live, I'm sorry. You're right. The live entertainment is the 29th and 30th. The one day beer and wine is the 29th, 30th, and 1st.
Live band. Maybe they're not going to have it on the 1st.
On the 1st. Okay. My apologies.
So the live entertainment permit application, a live band Christmas tree, for the Christmas tree season at Ravensbrook Farm. It's been approved by everybody that needs to approve it. So we have a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say, oh, we have a second.
I'll second, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. It's unanimous.
Wish them luck.
Now we have one day liquor license.
There we go.
And this is to Upland Ale Company, DBA Brewery 44. Again, it is at the Ravensbrook Farm. Time will run from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM for the dates of November 29th, November 30th, and December 1st, 2024. It's been approved by everybody that has to, or has to go to the, maybe alcohol, beverage people, but otherwise, town's all set. So we have a motion to...
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve those dates.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous also. Good. All right. Let's see. So we get this. Road opening, live entertainment. We have an ambulance abatement for October 2024. Number F on your...
Yeah. Do you want me to make it? You sure I'll make it? I'll make a motion to approve an ambulance abatement for October 2024 for $162,031.7.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Approval of Selectmen's Minutes, October 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen Meeting Minutes from October 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Or opposed? I'm jumping the gun. All right. Halifax firefighters' memorandum of agreement.
Yes. So this is just an MOA clarifying some language from the most recent contract regards, in regards to payout of vacation time upon separation of employment.
Okay. So we need to approve it, right?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement with Local 3159 IAFF Halifax firefighters.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I think we'll sign that.
Yes.
Okay. Lindsay Martinelli, appointment as interim town accountant. Do you want to just give it back?
Yeah, sir. Sure. So as you know, we knew Sandy Nolan was retiring, and we posted the town accountant job back in, I believe it was February of this year. So the goal was to try to get someone on board prior to Sandy leaving June 30th, have a, you know, a month or two of cross-training. Unfortunately, we have not been able to identify any viable candidates for the town. You know, we've had, you had one candidate before you, and then during some, he had a change of heart. We've continued to try to do some recruitment with this. We posted it on the Mass Municipal Association. We've done some direct outreach to some individuals in the municipal finance world. We've worked with Eric Kincheff, who is a consultant we've brought in to assist, reach out within his networks, and we really just haven't had success in identifying a viable candidate. In the meantime, since July, Lindsay Martinelli, who is our assistant town accountant, has run the office, day-to-day operations, take care of all the day-to-day tasks. She's been taking on more responsibility and really just doing an excellent job. So with that, my recommendation would be to appoint Lindsay as the interim town accountant for one year, and then we would keep the consultant on and phase them out over the next several months. And then once we've done that, we will look to hire an assistant town accountant, and then ultimately, within, you know, by the one-year mark, appoint Lindsay as the town accountant for a longer term. But I think it's a good plan to get her in place. She's done an awesome job. Everyone that I've spoken to that has dealt with her thinks this is a great choice. Both Eric Kincheff and Bill Rowe, who are the consultants we're utilizing, I spoke with them at length. They both recommended this, thought this was an excellent choice. So I think this is the best path forward for the town, and Lindsay's doing an excellent job, and we're excited to bring her into this role.
Okay. Comments from you?
No, I think it makes sense. And given the situation that we're in, she's smart as a whip, seems to have assimilated very easily to the job. Yeah. And it's nice to promote from within, too, you know? It's nice to have somebody grow with the town. Cody, I know you've been kind of leaning in with the accountant duties, and I know we're getting into budget season, and I don't think, I don't want to speak for you, but I don't know if you're going to have the time to lean in like you've been leaning in lately. So I think it's a common sense solution to a problem that's been around since the winter. So...
I just think, I echo those thoughts, but I'd also just say it's always nice to grow within your own ranks. I think there's something to be said for homegrown talent. I know she, you know, didn't start here as an 18-year-old high school student, but promote within, grow within, and I think that's something to be said for that long term.
I have two comments. I agree with you 100%. I'm thrilled that we can bring people up, that it's good for morale, it's good for us because we know them a little bit already, and it's also good for that corporate memory type of thing, so that, you know, somebody coming in brand new doesn't necessarily have as much background as somebody who's been here for a while. So I think it's very helpful. My other question though is, like in the military, you know, they have this big switcheroo. Are we going to have some sort of ceremony when she moves from one desk to the other?
Yeah. Well, I guess we can let her keep her desk if she wants. It doesn't really matter.
Well, I know. The town has always been in the corner.
Well, she is in the corner. She's just in the opposite corner, I guess. Yeah. We'll talk to her, see what she wants to do.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion to appoint Lindsay Martinelli as interim?
I will gladly make a motion to appoint Lindsay Martinelli as the Halifax interim town accountant. Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Contract?
Yes. And then the second part of that is, you have before you a one-year contract for interim town accountant with Lindsay. Yeah. If there's any questions, we're going to have to answer that, but...
Nope.
No?
I'll move that we approve the interim town accountant contract as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. So we do have the warrant to go through, which will probably take us at least a few minutes, but last other thing to deal with is the annual liquor...
Liquor licenses.
Liquor license inspections. So I'm assuming you don't know anything about this.
Not much.
Doesn't a new selectman usually handle the...
No.
I think last year, the former new selectman did them all.
That's right. Yeah. But don't forget, the year before, we all went.
We all went. Yeah, that's true.
So we are the licensing authority for liquor establishments, and annually, we make an inspection of every establishment in order to be sure that they're running proper show of work. And if you notice, there are, which is an improvement from years ago, there's at least a checklist now of what to look for. And so we can do it any way we want, but sometimes we all go just because that's like a training adventure. Other times, we just break it up into different pieces. If you want, I'm happy to go with you, and we can do them together.
Oh, is it on me? Did we already decide that?
No.
It's up to you, really. I mean, because you've never done it before. Jonathan knows what to do.
Yeah.
So, and I've done them a lot.
I mean, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10? We talking about 10 things? 10 spots?
No. I mean, I was ribbing you on you doing them all, but I...
No. But I mean, how long does it take? Is it, seems to be...
10 minutes.
Yeah. Two, three-hour period, right? In one given day?
Yeah.
Yes. Less than that.
I can do it.
All right. Well, we're not going to have to do them all.
No.
We'll split them.
Okay.
Anybody, all right, who has a preference on anything?
I'm just going to find my list.
I have no preference.
I don't either.
Well, why don't we just go down the list and...
Alternate? I can't find my list.
Location... Okay. So we have Mont Ponce Events, which is the Mont Ponce Inn, right?
Yep.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Country Club of Halifax. Who wants that one?
I'm sorry, John. What was that?
That next one's a country club?
Sure, I'll take it.
Tom?
Yep.
Okay. Dee's Grill 58. That'd be Jonathan.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Halifax Mobile, I'll do that. Happy Dragon Restaurant?
Sure.
Yeah. Scorpion Bowl's for everybody.
Yeah. Harmony 2 Liquors, that would be you.
I'll take that.
John?
It's the Harmony.
Lindsay's General Store is, back to me. Lionville Tavern is Tom?
Sure.
All right. Subham Inc., which is, I think that's the gas station.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. So that's one, two...
I think that's me.
So it's John. And then the last one is the T Box, which you, who has Harmony 2, John?
I do. And actually, I might be playing there this winter, so that might make sense for me to go in there and inspect. It'd be easy for me to get there.
Okay. All right. So we'll give you that one. So you get one extra.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Subham Inc., 655 Mont Ponce Street.
That's, um...
That's not, that's not a gas station.
That's down and down, that's Twin Lakes.
It's the mobile station over on...
No.
That's Plymouth Street.
Plymouth is the other way.
It's the one in the Halifax Hanson Line, down by...
Twin Lakes used to be.
Yeah, that's Twin Lakes, Twin Lakes. Yep. Yep, yep, yep.
Because 655 is too, not far enough away from...
I was getting my Mont Ponce, it's in my Plymouth.
You're right.
So the quick question is, the quick question I have is, and I've been there in a long time, Cumberland Farms, do they sell beer?
No.
That location does not sell beer there?
No. Well, lick the, um, the state law on beer, wine, liquor sales is really very strict in one sense. And a, an individual can only have so many licenses, which is why you see, like, over in East Bridgewater, that grocery store, Roche Brothers, I think it is, they sell beer and wine, but the other ones don't.
Right.
Because you can all, that's considered one corporation, so they can only have so many licenses.
So Cumberland Farms does not sell alcohol?
Not here in Halifax.
Correct, okay.
They may somewhere else.
Sure.
But not here.
Okay.
All right, so we just have to get these done by, well, technically by the end of the year. Because we renew the licenses on the seventeenth.
Yeah, so the second meeting in December is the seventeenth.
Yep, okay, good. All right, that handles that. Okay, I guess that's everything, except we don't have anybody here for?
645.
We still got ten minutes.
They had a meeting in Carver.
We're fine. Oh, okay. Do you guys wanna do the warrant?
Yeah, let's do the warrant, get it done.
So you each, I printed out the most updated, wrote up the pretty much final warrant. It should, John should be in your packet, and then actually get printed it for Jonathan and Tom.
I think I have it here.
Yep. Two articles. The first is obviously the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. Exactly what you've seen all along. The map has been inserted. So, you know, we'll make sure that the map is available in the town clerk's office, as mentioned in the, um, in the warrant. But also, we're gonna include it, you know, visually, it's a big map, so it might not be the easiest to see in the warrant. But again, we've heard the feedback from the community that they like as much information as possible in the warrant, so we will include it. And then Article Two is a petitioned article from Steve Goodman, 115 others, which is for the use of, banning the use of personal watercrafts, including jet skis, surf jet watercrafts, wet bike watercrafts. It prohibits them from east and west Mont Ponset ponds without a resident personal watercraft permit, which is to be displayed prominently on the personal watercraft at all times. The board will establish an annual fee to acquire such a permit. Any appropriate regulations regarding the use of these personal watercrafts, and a fine of not less than $300 for violations of this bylaw. Resident PWC permits are issued by the Halifax Police Department. They may only be launched from one of the two town-owned boat ramps at Fourth Ave and Route 36. PWCs are prohibited from launching from the Route 58 boat ramp. And no PWCs are allowed on any town-owned beach, other than for immediate purpose of launching or taking out. No PWC operations shall be allowed between the hours of 6:00 PM and 10:00 AM.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything with these? Or the board can take positions on them, it's entirely up to us, except for the first one, which the board sponsors. And I, I just have a, I have a comment on this, on the first one I'd like to read tonight, because I've been involved in this MBTA thing up to my eyeballs, I think. And, oh well, let me just read the whole thing. I'll start by saying yet again that I do not agree with the MBTA housing law. In my view, the MBTA housing law is an example of what is wrong with Massachusetts state government. This law is a heavy-handed, uninspired, ill-considered, one-size-fits-all supposed solution to what has become a cause celebre among state politicians. For anyone who's been paying attention, myself, as well as the Halifax Board of Selectmen, have for the last two years complained of this callous, imperious dictate from the state. The Board of Selectmen made numerous attempts to enlist the support of Halifax's local representatives to the state legislature to change or abandon the MBTA housing law. It's my belief that the only way this law is abandoned or changed is through the legislature and the governor. To date, there has not, to my knowledge, been any movement to reconsider the law. I take my responsibilities as a town official very seriously, as do the other members of the Board of Selectmen with whom I have had and do have the pleasure of serving with. When we were first alerted to the mandates of the MBTA housing law about two years ago, this board made very clear that we oppose the law and asked our local legislative members to work with us to change or abandon it. Nevertheless, unlike the previous Boards of Selectmen and the previous zoning bylaw review committee, who simply ignored the law, this board, as well as the newly restructured zoning bylaw review committee, investigated the law and how to address, saying, keeping in mind Halifax's best interests. The result of this investigation is the proposal to rezone, which is Article One, the Twin Lakes condominiums and the abutting property, which is the subject of our special town meeting in December. This proposal to make a zoning change, which will be acceptable under the MBTA housing law, but would have almost no impact on Halifax. As proposed then, the zoning change was a practical solution to a problem. The problem being how to address the MBTA dictate while not causing any real change to Halifax. I thought this was in the best interest of the town and its citizens. We would make a change which would have no impact and prevent the state from punishing Halifax as it is likely to do if the MBTA housing law is not complied with by the end of 2024. Perhaps naively, I thought that in good faith, the state, through our local state representative delegation, would give serious consideration to our objections to this law, and would work with us to abandon the law, but that in the meanwhile, the town would be in compliance. I've come to understand recently, though, that there does not appear to be any interest in overturning the MBTA housing law, and that in fact, it is part of a progressive agenda to further causes that I, I simply do not believe are good for Massachusetts, and certainly not good for Halifax. Government mandates to address supposed crises are not a solution that I can endorse, but appears to be what the MBTA law is expected by its supporters to accomplish. It appears to me that if Halifax makes the proposed zoning change, this will be nothing more than a win for ever increasing government mandates and bullying by those currently in power. As a public official and as a private citizen of the Commonwealth, I do not agree with increased government mandates, and especially resent the bullying by those in power, specifically the current Attorney General's decision to prosecute cases against her constituents, as she is now doing. One can certainly look at the proposed zoning change as in the best interest of Halifax. After all, if the town is not in compliance by year's end, we face loss of state grants and the possibility of being targeted by the Attorney General. As a practical matter, I would very much like to avoid these consequences. However, if agreeing to the zoning change means that the MBTA housing law and likely future types of mandates will continue, then I can't support the change. So I've changed my view on this. I thought, honestly thought that the zoning bylaw committee had done a great job in coming up with a compromise that would not put us in any sort of jeopardy. But what I've seen lately in terms of the discussion is no one discusses this bylaw at all. We talk about it a little bit, say, okay, this is, we tried to have a public hearing, where we tried to explain what it was all about. But the debate isn't about that. It's about broader issues, I'll say, whether or not the state should be forcing things, and whether or not the town would be resisting it. And after giving it that much thought and just seeing how it's going, I just can't, I just can't vote in favor of it anymore. So, that'd be my view on it.
I, I will have, I will have a statement I'm putting together for the special town meeting. And I'll be honest, I've been, I've been up nights on this one. You know, I've been yes, I've been no, I've been everywhere in between on it. I will say that everybody here on this board is always trying to do what's best for the town. You know, and actions that we take with this will have consequence, one way or the other. And it's which one of those consequences is more palatable, I guess. It's a hard one, it's a hard one. But yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a no for me right now. I just hope that, that the folks can understand in this community that there could and very well be some consequences, and we have to be okay with what those are. I want to thank the zoning bylaw committee that spent a long time to come up with a great plan. And if things were different, I don't know, if, if things were different and we, it wasn't such a, a heavy-handed issue, I think it was a home run. But I think, given the, the greater picture of what's going on here, and I will say the momentum that seems to be gaining across the state, I guess I'm willing to take that chance and say no.
I think, you know, I've been pretty clear on this from the start. You know, I think for a number of reasons, which I don't have to all detail here now. But the momentum is certainly heading away from the Commonwealth's unfunded mandate. I think Halifax is a benefactor of additional information. The more towns that vote, the more people weigh in, the clearer it becomes that, you know, the 40,000-foot view from above from the State House isn't necessarily what's best for the towns. There are consequences to each decision, which I think the town needs to realize. And I think, you know, if we're prepared to do that, change is not always bad. I think there's a misconception here in town sometimes that change is just an earth-shattering thing. And I don't think that has to be the case. But I think we should be a little particular in the change that we're willing to accept and basically be pushed into. You know, and there's some other things going on in the state that don't need to get wrapped up in this. But I just think, you know, just to put it real quick in a two-sentence, you know, synopsis here. Question one on the ballot, most recently in November, was a 71% in favor of a state audit that is now being rewritten by the state legislature in their favor. When they didn't get their way, they dug in. So I think this is just another example of a 40,000-foot view that not every town fits into their box, and it's not created the same. I remain a no vote.
Do we wanna take a position as the board, or you're not ready for that yet? You can always defer.
So you, yeah, your, your options for all the articles are you can recommend, you can vote to not recommend, or you can say you won't do anything, or you can say Board of Selectmen will provide a recommendation at town meeting.
I mean, do we have the ability to defer this, as we've done in previous votes, to two weeks from now, where we still have time? It sounds like Jonathan's still a little bit, I don't wanna, you know, I don't think you should rush anything.
If you guys don't mind, I would like to, I would like to push off a little bit, please.
So we'll just print in the warrant, Board of Selectmen, recommendation at town meeting?
Well, we don't necessarily have to recommend anything, so I don't know if we even have to print that. Because we don't, we don't recommend, we don't make recommendations on everything anyway.
No, you're right, you don't have to.
I think we do, some think we don't.
You're right, you don't have to. The community was looking for, there was some of the feedback we got, so, but we can just put nothing?
I would say so.
Okay.
But we can certainly interject at the meeting with an opinion.
And I do, I, I am working on a statement, and I plan to deliver that at the special town meeting. And I don't know if the board is okay with, with giving me a little bit of time to put.
Forgive me, when does, when does the warrant go to print?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Well, the warrant closes, but that's.
But I think to get it printed.
So the warrant closes actually on the fourth, and then it's going to print tomorrow.
Yeah.
I mean, the Finance Committee, if I'm not mistaken, is making a recommendation at town meeting, correct? Yes. I think it's fair that the Board of Selectmen do the same.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Okay, Article Two, any discussion about?
Can I, just a point of clarity on that one? I know, the verbiage here says that they have to launch from one of the two owned ramps. Does that mean a resident that, that has property on the water can't launch from their property?
The way it's written, I would say.
The way the bylaw's written, yes. You know, a lot of this, it's, it's, we spoke to counsel about this. You know, at its surface, it's legal, you know, which is really, with a petition article, it's our job is to say whether it's legal or not.
Sure.
Is it enforceable? I mean, that, a lot of this is really not enforceable.
I, I get what they're trying to do, but if I owned, if I owned a jet ski and I lived on the, on the water, and I've been a law-abiding citizen this whole time, I would feel really badly if, for all, all of a sudden, they can't use it from their property and have to get it over to the, to the boat ramp.
Well, the other thing about it is, you know, they tried to do some Peters Pond down, down the Cape, and there became issues with hardship permits from the town. How do you enforce what a hardship permit is from the town versus an out-of-towner? I mean, I get where they're coming from, this was the hot-button issue before the MBTA was a hot issue. It seemed to be like the flavor of the day three, four, five months ago. And I understand what they're doing. But there doesn't seem to be.
I, I, I mean, besides the fact that I, that I think that the enforcement here is, will never happen, frankly. I mean, the only way you could possibly do it would be to enlist the police department. And we're talking about a very big expenditure in terms of, of, uh, watercraft, in terms of, we'd have to hire additional policemen, there's a whole union issue about that. We don't have part-time policemen, we'd end up hiring full-timers. And then staffing, I mean, it's just a whole bunch of stuff that, if they expect that to happen, it's probably not going to. I mean, I don't personally have an opinion about these.
I don't have, I don't have a skin.
As far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see sailboats and canoes, but that's outside of my. And I, I would say as far as, as far as the board goes, I, I would say, I personally think we should just stay out of it. I mean, if anybody asks a question, we could certainly give whatever.
I mean, I could certainly empathize with them. So I understand where they're coming from, but in terms of an enforcement, it's just difficult. So I agree with that, I'm fine with that.
And I don't, I don't, I will be honest, I don't use the waterways probably not as much as I should. But I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I'll let the town decide.
Okay. Okay, that, oh, I'm sorry, Bob?
Sure.
I wasn't paying attention.
Please, please, there you go.
Stoneway Road, I know from other ponds that I've gone to fish, they're on the water. They use the environmental police. Because the town, most of the waterways I know on the state belong to the state. And I don't know if we could enforce the rules specifically, have a police force out there chasing someone around. But I also have, I've been to ponds and lakes where they have what they call a quiet time. It's on Sunday, and sometimes it's even on the weekend, and it's between hours of, say, four o'clock and eight o'clock or something like that. So that might be another option that you look. I guess the biggest question I pose is someone comes in from another town, and they go to one of these boat ramps or anything. Are these gonna be posted, are these gonna be sent out? Whatever rules you put together, you know, someone comes in from another town, starts to launch a jet ski, and doesn't know you have rules in the town. So that, that needs to be clarified, how you're gonna get it out there. And secondly, as I say, do you have the enforcement of the officers? Or do you have to use environmental police if the lake pond is underneath the state?
There are, I think, usually only one or two environmental policemen for this whole area, if I'm not mistaken. And they do everything from deerjacking in the woods to enforcing stuff on the water. And they do come by, they have come by last summer, when, when we're, we had so much activity on the lake. They do, they do come by, they do what they can, but to have somebody there all the time is.
It's not gonna happen. And someone visits someone, for example, Ocean Ave, and they bring a jet ski, even though they're a resident, they launch from that person's.
That's another problem.
You've got no way of controlling it.
Yes.
Kind of gonna catch 22.
Okay, that concludes our discussion of the warrant. It is.
We need you to vote to approve the warrant, so we can get it sent out.
I will make a motion that we approve the warrant as written.
Just clarifying, without, without a recommendation from the board on either one or two, correct?
We're just approving the, the form that belonged on there.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. That's unanimous. Okay, so we are five minutes late. I apologize to the county commission. We have a presentation of funds, which we're always happy that we should have put you right at the top of the agenda.
Whenever they get a big check, we wanna.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Let's go down there. We'll come down there.
Take that. Thank you.
I moved to Plymouth, but Rockland's still doing well, I think it's still standing without me. Yeah, no, I remember, yeah. So maybe we'll do the picture first, then we'll just say a couple of quick words, if that makes sense. All right. It's probably right in front, I don't know who we can. Sorry. No, that's fine. You know, we're not like the legislature. Sure, you just wanna, you set it there and I'll take care of it? Get all those handsome people. Where? I'll let you know when they get here. That's one. That is two, well done.
How are you, Jim? We have to stop meeting like this.
All right. All right.
Thank you very much for coming, and especially thank you for that giant big check. We'll see if we can put it in the bank, but.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jared Valenzola. I am county commissioner and chair of the board, joined this evening by Commissioner Wright, as well as Jimmy Valentin from Senator Mike Brady's office. Before I do begin, I do just want to send the regrets of our third colleague, Commissioner Greg Hanley, as well as Treasurer Tom O'Brien. We are working diligently to get these funds out the door, so we've tethered Treasurer O'Brien to his desk to make sure that we can get these approvals in. We began and embarked on this several years ago, I know Commissioner Wright will talk a little bit more about that. But we're really proud of this program and the partnership we've had with the town of Halifax. Cody and your team have done an excellent job with the compliance that is necessary to secure these funds. And as you see, you know, some, some vehicles, as well as some improvements to the fire department, and as well as contracted some HR services. Again, good use of these one-time funds, so we're really pleased with the partnership we've had with the town. We wouldn't be able to do it, of course, without the support of Senator Brady, as well as Representative Lenatra, who've both been steadfast and staunch advocates for the town, for these funds, and it's been a pleasure to work with both of them. And we have already begun conversations with Representative-elect Suesi as well. So Halifax is well-represented in the legislature, and we're really happy to have that partnership. So before I say anything further, I'd just like to hand it over to Commissioner Wright to say a few more words, and then Mr. Valentin on behalf of Senator Brady.
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Good evening, thank you for having us here this evening. I always start off by saying that it always, you know, helps when a person goes out and candidates and, and runs for races, because you get a chance to find out what the people out there are really thinking and what they, you know, don't understand and don't know. Just recently, I was out there, a lot of people didn't know what the CARES Act was, what the APPA funds were, where the money came from, you know, how we distributed, you know, to different towns. It's actually, you know, just like when I ran as county commissioner, it was an education, you know, they didn't know what county government did, so you're out there educating them all the time. But, you know, it's, it's always a delight to be able to, you know, tell them what we do and, and how much we, you know, give to the 27 or the 26 towns in the city of Brockton, because it is important for people to understand. We've come a long ways from back 2010, when I got in. You know, we were millions of dollars in the deficit, and, you know, we've come a long ways. So it's nice now to be on this side and be able to do a lot more for our communities. But as we wind down, I just want to remind all of you that the program became a tough reality, as never experienced before. We never experienced COVID-19, and none of the towns really knew what to do. And, you know, you weren't prepared to take that on. So we were able to step in, thank goodness, and, and manage it, which was a good thing for our community. You know, perhaps the most significant thing that we undertook was the CARES Act and the APPA funds delivering twice as much money in half the time and only at 1% administration cost. So that leads me to now, I, so to bring you the point where, you know, how much money we have given you, I have a breakdown here, just to let the people know that, you know, not only this check tonight that we gave you of $140,000, but overall, how much money we have given out to your, your town. So for CARES Act, we gave $1,275,321.18. For APPA funds, we've given $1,418,762.63. So it really adds up, you know, these little chunks here and there, it doesn't seem to seem like a lot, but when you really think of, you know, the overall cost or the overall funds that we've given out, it really adds up. And, you know, we're really happy to have been able to administer and do this for you. The commissioners and I and Tom O'Brien, Treasurer O'Brien, you know, are just thrilled to death and, you know, what we've been able to do and the opportunity that we've had to work with you people. It hasn't been an easy task on your end, and we, you know, appreciate all your staff and what they've done over the many years. Thank you so much.
Fantastic, yeah.
Thank you.
On behalf of Senator Michael D. Brady's office, these funds are definitely a one-time opportunity. And I appreciate that these funds are being used for public service. Our firefighters, our police officers, PDW deserve so much respect for keeping the town working and functioning every day. And of course, any help that we can provide from the office, please don't hesitate to call. We're always a phone call away, an email away, and we're happy to help, whatever possible. Thank you for having me here, and of course, this is an amazing time for Halifax. Our public service people have worked diligently every day to serve the people, so thank you.
So this is one of your probably favorite things to do, is to come and hand out big checks, right?
It always is, and to the commissioner's point, you know, we, we went up 58 to, from Carver to here, and last night we were in East Bridgewater, tomorrow Marion and Halifax. But it has been great to be able to be out on the road and to visit with you folks, and to bring, to bring the check. Just for the edification of those at home, this program is sunsetting December 31st of this year. So the county of Plymouth, as well as your own funds that you receive directly from the federal government, needs to be committed by December 31st of this year. Then we have until December 31st of 2026 to get those funds out the door. So to date, over $70 million of the close to $100 million that Plymouth County was awarded has been sent out the door. So we are diligently working again with Cody and your team to make sure that these funds get to Halifax. As Commissioner Wright mentioned, we delivered more money more quickly. We're still trending at the 1% administrative cost, but we made a commitment that we're not gonna send a dime back to Washington DC either. So we're making sure that money stays in Halifax and it stays in Plymouth County. And, and that's gonna require a lot of meetings, you know, we scheduled meetings, special. meetings, December 30th and December 31st, so we'll be spending New Year's Eve together, Commissioner Wright and I, anyway. Jimmy, you guys are all more than welcome to join us as well, but we will be voting to get those funds out the doors, so that way we're not sending anything back. But again, we've been really pleased with the partnership that we've had with the town of Halifax and to continue working together with you folks. So that's it, I think on our end, the treasurer isn't here to correct me or point out anything I may have missed, which is a good thing, and Commissioner Wright hasn't pointed out anything I've missed either, so if appropriate, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to take any questions that you folks may have.
I would think that if you want, we'll designate one of us to be the driver for you, so we can make sure we get all the money that we're supposed to get.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
So we've submitted applications for our full allocation, so I anticipate we'll see our commissioners probably one more time for that last round of applications. They're all pending level three review at this point.
Yes, excellent. Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because I do, I do know, I forgot one thing, you know, one of the things that we've been able to do with this administration, with the CARES Act and with ARPA, the other commitment we made was when we are giving you these monies, they're not going to be clawed back. So what happened with the Commonwealth and their administration of the CARES Act, and we've seen it happen with ARPA, not in the state, but certainly nationwide, is with the CARES Act, they'd give you the money and they'd give you the compliance and say, make sure we're doing this correct, and then when they got around to realizing they may not have, they clawed money back, and that happened to the tunes of millions of dollars across the Commonwealth. That didn't happen in Plymouth County with CARES, and it's not happening with ARPA either. So as Cody mentioned, there are three levels of review. The third level is Treasurer O'Brien, so you've made it through the first major hurdles, he's the last big hurdle before it gets to us to, to sign. But I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did forget that, and I think that's important to note, that we provided that service. A lot of, every town received direct funds from the federal government, you've been able to utilize our services to also make sure your funds are compliant, but to also make sure that when we're giving you this check, it's done and dusted, it's going in the bank, and it's not going to be clawed back, and it's, it's in full compliance with federal law. So we're really proud of that as well.
We were also unrecognized.
Yeah, we were, for, for the CARES Act, we were recognized nationally through the, from the Department of the Treasury, as well as US Congress and the National Association of Counties. We're hoping we'll receive similar accolades for ARPA. Right now, we know that we're certainly trending in that direction, so.
Fantastic. We do appreciate the work that you do, and certainly valuable to us.
Absolutely, and we will be back, we're looking forward to that. We're approving these 30, 40, 50 a night now at our meetings, so it's keeping us very busy, but it's good work, and we're happy to have the partnership and collaboration.
Okay, good.
Just want to thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here.
Have a rest of your meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't be such a stranger.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Nice to meet you. Take care.
Thanks for being here, appreciate it.
All right, let's see, okay, so that takes care of that.
Updates.
Updates, solvents. Oh, we did the warrant, so we did that, all right, updates, that's it?
Yes, MBTA zoning, the planning board held their public hearing last Thursday, they voted unanimously to not recommend the zoning bylaw. And then just a reminder, obviously, special town meeting December 16th, 6:30 over at the elementary school, you approved the warrant tonight, we're going to get those to print literally tomorrow, and then they'll get out in the mail probably sometime the week after, we have Thanksgiving in there, so it might delay it a bit, but residents can anticipate seeing the warrants in their mailboxes the end of November and into early December. So again, as we do with the annual town meeting, everyone gets a warrant, so check your mailbox and bring your warrant to town meeting is also the other important aspect of that.
Cody, are there, were there extras again, what do we do, the library, or do we put extras at the library or the post office?
No, typically we'll bring them to, you know, some extras to town meeting, but again, we don't print a ton of extras, you know, this is, it's a pretty big cost to print these things.
Sure.
So, you know, we really, and we put right on the warrant, please bring this to town meeting. It'll be on our website, we'll get these on our website tomorrow and make it as accessible as possible to everybody.
Cool.
As far as.
By the way, town meeting will be held in the gym, I assume?
Yes, in the gym at the elementary school, we're working to identify overflow capacity, but the main town meeting will be in the gym, 6:30.
And another reminder, it's, it's two articles, so should be, should be pretty, I don't want to say quick night, but it'll be, it'll be two, two topics, that's all.
And then just general staffing and operationally, we have holidays in Halifax on December 14th, I believe that'll be 5:00 to 8:00 PM, more information and hopefully scheduled to come from the committee soon. I already mentioned the special town meeting, we have been meeting with the Taunton River Watershed Alliance to explore some grant funding to improve fishing recreational passages along our tributaries of the Taunton River. So we've gotten some feedback recently that kayaker, kayakers and canoeers have a hard time going all the way through some of our tributaries, they're having to get out, lift, so there's actually grant funding available to clean up some of that, so working to identify that and submit an application. The town barn roof replacement is finally complete, about a year and a half in the making, but it is complete, it's been signed off on, and that is good to go. Two new boilers were recently installed at Halifax Elementary School, so kudos to Scott Materna and the team over there for overseeing that. Our Green Communities Grant, the work has begun for that, so weatherization, insulation has begun at the town hall, the police station, the water department, and the highway barn to improve our energy efficiency at no cost to the town. And then just another reminder, no outdoor burning, that order is in effect from the Halifax Fire Department, so no outdoor fires whatsoever. And that is it.
Anything else to come before the board?
I got nothing.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next meeting is what, the?
December 3rd.
All right, December 3rd.
Thank you.